City Council order, we had a roll call with the special meeting with the, with the library board that we just concluded and we were all here. We'll move at this time into, no, okay. Roll call again, you've got it on the agenda.
Council agency member Durham, Lingal, Roger.
Here.
Mayor Protam, Vice Chair Cecilia Martner.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Mike Seminski.
Present.
Our invocation tonight, Bill Detton is going to lead us in a prayer. You rise all.
Eternal Creator, we thank you for the abundance of blessings which we have received from you, for this free land in which we dwell, this magnificent state, and this glorious little valley in which we are privileged to live. We thank you especially for the promise of your guidance available whenever we turn to you seeking it. And we pray, for all of us, that guidance, but especially at this time, for these members of the council, as they wrestle together with the mundane, tedious, sometimes very frustrating issues of income and expenditures, personnel, services, we pray for your guidance that they might work out the best possible mix to lead to the residents of this community whom they serve. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please say with me the pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, yeah, light, light agenda. Presentations made elsewhere in the last couple of weeks. The agenda is in error. I did not make the Chamber of Commerce Man of the Year presentation. Vice Mayor, Mayor Protam, Cecilia Martner made those presentations. She and I both and all the council commend Alice Downe and Jim Hall for their, for their service to the community and the recognition. I did on July 15th attend a birthday party at the Lompoc Convalescent Care Center and I gave a special presentation of achievement, of recognition, to Enrique Molina for his 100th birthday. And that is an achievement. There's many days I get up and I think I'm not going to make it to the next one, but 100 years is pretty significant. Next item on the agenda is the city administrator's executive director's status report and at the same time any staff requests and announcements.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, audience and viewers, there are two items on the city administrator's status report tonight. First item is a status report from City Clerk Donna Tironas reporting fourth quarter new business tax activities. Ms. Tironas reports 104 new businesses for April, May, and June of this year compared to 92 new businesses for the same period last year. The second item is a status report from Community Development Director Arlene Pelster summarizing economic development activities for July. Ms. Pelster is available tonight to present her report and she is at the podium.
Thank you. The first item I'd like to go over is the California Association for Local Economic Development Professional Advisory Service Review that we've been working to schedule. The team will be visiting Lompoc to develop local economic vitality recommendations. The review will be conducted next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, July 28th, 29th, and 30th. The team consists of one CalEd staff member and three economic development professionals from other areas. We'll begin the process on Wednesday at 2:00 PM at a special council meeting. At that meeting, the team will brief the council and interested parties on economic development principles and practices which are necessary for the success of an economic development effort. We will then recess to an informal dinner with the team to get acquainted and help them get acquainted with our community. We will be participating in interviews all day Thursday on a one-by-one basis. The team will break up and interview different community members as well as council members and planning commissioners on their ideas on economic development as well as other thoughts and challenges. We will then recess to a meeting Friday morning at 9:00 in the morning where the team will brief us on their initial observations and recommendations. Then after they leave the city, they will convene again and prepare a written report for our consideration with their recommendations for our economic development future in Lompoc. They have a great team assembled. They have the Assistant Director of Economic Development for Riverside County's EDA. We have the Director of Cal State Fresno's Office of Community and Economic Development, the Community Services Manager from the City of Marina, which is, I understand, fairly similar to Lompoc, as well as a principal staff member from CalEd. So I think this is going to be a great process. The price is certainly right. It's less than $8,000 altogether covering their travel expenses and an honorarium. So I think we're really going to benefit from this. We're also having a meeting this Thursday on July 22nd to begin work on updating the Federal Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, acronym known as SEDS. And we are participating with California Space Authority on this project, so we are getting it done in a fairly economical manner. As you know, at your last meeting, you approved the text amendment to allow wine tasting rooms in the industrial district. We have one application and four pending, so we do have businesses that are taking advantage of that new change to the ordinance, so that's exciting for us. We've also held telephone interviews with qualified structural engineers for structural engineering services for buildings in our old town. We've got some great firms. We're reviewing four proposals which we all think are very good proposals and we're hoping that this service will really help our downtown property owners get started on fixing those unreinforced masonry buildings. So we'll be working with the chamber and the property owners to move this program forward just as soon as we select our firm. In my report, I gave you an accounting of the chamber's tourism advertising expenditures that was requested, as well as information noting that it is cost prohibitive for the chamber to participate in the folder display service at Vandenberg Air Force Base. So that's information that I'm passing on to you from the Chamber of Commerce. So we've got a busy couple of weeks in economic development and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Pelster. Any questions this time? Mr. Roger.
Arlene, Ms. Pelster, how many property owners are involved in?
There are six buildings.
Six. I couldn't remember. Thank you.
Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the CalEd, isn't there something going on this Thursday or Friday?
That's the SEDS.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I know. The acronyms are very similar.
Thank you, correct.
The SEDS is the federal program that we'd like to participate in.
Mr. Lingal.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you for the report, Ms. Pelster. I appreciate the report. I'm a little concerned that it's very similar to our last report, not a lot of, I mean, not as much activity as I'd like to see. And I was wondering if we could possibly, if it's possible, to have someone contact a business via phone call, via letter, something, maybe on a weekly basis, preferably on a daily basis, just so we could be making contacts. I mean, what I call is knocking on the doors.
Were you looking at business retention in the community?
Not necessarily business retention, new business.
New business.
New business, new possibilities of employment. Just being out there, sending, sending literature to, to them about our community, the possibilities, just something in their hands. So when they start thinking about a possibility of going someplace, they would say, oh, I remember seeing something about Lompoc, California.
Do you have a specific industry you'd like us to target?
Well, I mean, this is something they were going to get out of this CalEd's program.
Yeah, I do believe this is where, one of the things that, obviously, I've been having quite a bit of conversations with the CalEd staff members, and that's one of the things that they do feel is necessary to a successful economic development effort, especially when you're launching it with limited staff, is you've really got to focus, got to focus on industries that are likely to come into the community. That's also where we had put money in the redevelopment budget to work with a consumer analytics firm so that we can kind of hone our efforts and do have an outreach program. So this would be definitely something that would be great to bring up next week, and if we could have a particular industry or retail sector that the council would like to see us target, we can certainly do that. And then we could develop appropriate literature and outreach program.
And I'm sure the CalEd's is going to help us, but we've got some industries that we should be focusing on right now. I mean, we've got a public safety complex that's going to be going up very shortly. We should be concentrating on any business associated with public safety throughout the state, maybe even possibly of the nation. Anything with military or aerospace, we should be concentrating on. Obviously agriculture and the wine industry. Those are just some, anything associated with that.
We're thinking along the same lines because we are going to be interviewing folks from those industries, from Allen Hancock, from the base. We're inviting those people to interview with the CalEd team, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Can I?
Another one?
You can't.
Well, then, why don't you go first?
This is in reference to what Mr. Lingal brought up. I know from time, not from time to time, but you, this effort, and it will be brought up next, next week about, with CalEd, from time to time, the chamber also gets inquiries for business and, you know, they're, because we do work with them rather closely now, and we could work out some, some way where we could communicate with them and find out what they've got.
I'm in touch with Mr. Anderson regularly.
Yeah, I know you are.
We have kind of a regular communication. I'd say we probably talk at least twice a week, so we do chase down leads and I will be, I'll be reporting on those as, as they come up.
Right. And then, yeah, okay.
No other, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
No other staff requests or announcements, Ms. Pelster.
No other items.
At this time, we turn to council requests and announcements. Ms. Roger.
Well, the first one I have is a question to our city attorney. I understand the memorandum of understanding with the, I don't know all the whole thing, with the Park Foundation about the Pocket Park is in the works, and I was wondering the status of it.
Through the mayor, I think it was back in April where we went back and forth a few, with a few versions, and the last version that I prepared, I sent to the Parks Association Committee, and I have not heard back from them.
Do you remember when that was?
It was sometime in April, if I recall.
April. Okay. Thank you. The other thing I had, and I was waiting for Councilmember Durham to bring this up, or Captain, sorry, Chief Dabney. I do the same thing that I used to do. We had this fantastic community cleanup on July 10th, and I believe there were 428 people came out for this effort. In our weekly report, we got a listing of all the stuff, junk, that got picked up, and it came to about 9.62 tons of, I'll say, stuff that was found in alleys, on the streets, at the river park. There was 17 tires, two refrigerators, a freezer, a dryer, 24 televisions. People just dump that stuff in their alleyways and thank heavens for this wonderful group of people and our police department that helped with it, and our city staff that provided the rear loaders and the roll-off boxes to get rid of all this stuff that people have left in there all over the city. And then I'll let Tony finish up the report on that about the graffiti and all that. But it's kind of just, it is, not kind of, it is disgraceful that volunteers have to go out and clean up your junk. So I think, I hope people will realize this, this is a free service, but it was volunteers that did it. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roger. Mr. Durham, do you have any announcements or requests?
Yes, sir. Following up on Councilmember Roger, not only did we have over nine ton of trash, but we went through 125 gallons of paint. The only difficulty trying, we had one gentleman in a pickup truck that kept driving the wrong way bringing in shopping carts, you know, that he found. Yeah, that's the guy, right there. Yeah, yeah. Chief, how you doing? I kept getting these complaints, hey, who's this old guy driving this truck the wrong way? And when I realized who it was, I said, don't call him old. But, but it was a great turnout, it really was. Everybody that was involved, Captain Deming from the police department, Pastor Bernie, the other pastors in the community. We had just a wonderful group of people that came for the right reasons. You know, I, I've had a conversation, you know, with staff, you know, we have county roads that, that, you know, certain people will take a mile of the road and take it as a cleanup project. Well, you know, if you're unavailable for these types of cleanup days, well, what would you think about having, just be responsible for your block? You know, if you see some trash or you see something that needs to be painted over, graffiti, obviously you contact the police department prior to painting over the graffiti because they do want to take photographs of it and if they can prosecute. But never the case, what's wrong with taking pride in our community? Instead of doing it once every few months or several months, how about doing it on a daily basis where you get up, you leave the house to go to work and you see, oh, you know, there's a bag of trash or whatever. Get out, pick it up, throw it in the trash can. Be responsible for your own neighborhood. Let your, let your neighborhood be proud of the way it looks. Don't wait for the city, for the staff, for the police department to come out and clean up your block. What's wrong with cleaning up your block? So we'll see. But it was an outstanding, outstanding event. And yes, we had another great evening with the Chamber of Commerce when it came to the Man of the Year Award. I was the emcee of the program, and it was cool because in 2008, I received the award and didn't have a clue until it hit me like a ton of bricks. Well, I'm watching Jim Hall in the back of the room and he's got this deer-in-the-headlight look, looking around like, okay, I know something, and then all of a sudden they said something about the bar, and then you could see, oh, then he knew. So it's, it's really a good thing, and it's, it's heartwarming and well-deserved. You know, Alice Downs is a sweetheart. I don't know why she stays with Ray, but she, she's a hard worker and so is Ray. But like Jim said, like Jim Hall said, behind every award, for a man anyway, there's a woman. And Katrina's, you know, she's been right by his side from thick and thin, and it was a great evening. And we had the pleasure of having the Mayor Protam, Ms. Martner, give the awards from the city, which was very nice. So thank you.
Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mayor. Did you give the chief a ticket or?
It was on private property.
I just want to briefly sort of say all of this, all the comments that we're making here tonight is about volunteers. Great work on July the 10th. The Man and the Woman of the Year Award is about volunteering in this community. We just heard from the Public Library Board of Trustees, and they were telling us about the thousands of hours of volunteering work that goes on in our public libraries. So this community lives by their volunteers and everybody needs to be commended to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So no more comments, we'll close council comments and we'll turn to oral communications. As we start oral communications, I'd like to mention that earlier this week, I received a phone call from an individual, and unlike most of the calls, this was complimentary and it was praise for a department of our city. I talked to the individual again today and, and he wanted to make sure that the kudos, the compliments that he uses are made public, and so I invited him tonight. So I'd like to start with the oral communications and ask Chris DeWitt to come up and talk to us. And then after that, anybody else on anything you'd like to speak about if it's related to city business? Mr. DeWitt.
Well, first of all, Michael.
If the mic is on.
Hello?
And we do have a five-minute time limit if you will watch.
Yes, I will be brief.
The lights, green, yellow, or do they work in, Donna?
I will be brief. Michael, thank you so much for inviting me to this forum. I don't know all of you. You and I've had more time on the phone, and I've also spoken to your chief. And I just want to relate a story to you very, very briefly. On Sunday afternoon, I was a victim of a home invasion. This person that, I don't know, but I suspect he was on methamphetamines, broke into my house and I confronted him in my living room, chased him off because I'm big, and I yelled. But then I rang the police and the response was nothing less than spectacular. They were well-coordinated. I've given the chief the names of all the officers that were attending. I didn't have the name of the woman that was the dispatcher, but she was brilliant too. She said she had her hands full. There was like three, four calls popping off all the time, and I felt I was very well-served and that I should say thank you in public for the good work that has been done. Since then, other than attending here, I've contacted Sergeant Rio to help me organize a community watch in my, in my trailer park about volunteerism. Yes, I understand that theme. I can't count on everybody to do everything for me. I have to do something myself, and I just wanted to express my thanks.
Thank you for coming in and telling us, Mr. DeWitt, and we appreciate it.
It's not much to say, but you know.
The police officers will hear from their chief also of your words here.
Yes, they will. Thank you.
I will comment that the first part of the conversation, when I started talking to Mr. DeWitt, he said, I had a wonderful experience last week. I had a home invasion. And I said, what? He's easily pleased, I guess.
I mean, they were there.
The home invasion was not the wonderful experience, sorry. It was the police officer's, the police response.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, my friend.
Mayor, council, John Lynn, City of Lompoc. I was hoping you might consider taking two items off the consent calendar and moving them down. You know, staff takes a lot of heat for things, and there are two things that, on the consent calendar, that they did an outstanding job on, and I think it would be nice if they got to get their two minutes' worth on the road item and on the meter item. I read both the reports and I thought, you know, there's some creative workmanship. So thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time that would, would like to speak to us during our oral communications? Seen no one. Got to be quick.
There you go.
How are we doing today? My name's Eric Brown, City of Lompoc resident, and I'd like to inquire on what we're doing about our gang problem. I was a recent victim in a gang violence, gang violence in Santa Maria where I was in the Denny's restaurant and I was assaulted and almost killed. I received a tooth knocked out, and I'd just like to see what the city is doing about monitoring our gang activity. It's a question that my family and I have, and we'd like to see something done about it.
Thank you. We, we do get a regular report. The chief prepares regular reports, and I'm sure if you give him his name, he can see that you get a copy of the last one and, and talk to you about, and answer your question.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you want no one else at this time? Is there any comments of the council on the, on the items before us? Let's turn then to the consent calendar.
Yeah.
We have tonight four items on the consent calendar that are considered routine. I'm sorry, Mr. Lingal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
DeWitt's on the consent.
I was going to briefly comment on item three and four, but since there was a request to pull them and allow someone to make a comment, I would like to make that request that we pull items three and four from the consent calendar for further discussion.
Items three and four will be pulled and they will be dealt with separately at the end of the agenda, the end of the evening. Are there any requests, any further requests with respect to items one and two? We have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar after pulling items three and four.
I second that.
Motion on the floor, those, let's cast our votes. Consent items one and two are, are approved. Appointments, we have an item to appoint the council representative for the voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference in September 15th to 17th in 2010 in San Diego. Who amongst us will be attending that conference? I plan on attending that conference.
You just turned your mic off, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's, sorry about that. I'd like to make a comment about involvement in the league, and I, and I really wish more people had the opportunity on the council and the time to be involved in the League of Cities. A couple of years ago, we had a situation where we had to appoint a vacancy, a person to a vacancy because the mayor died. We, state law told us that we had to make an appointment within 30 days or else we had to go to election. I talked to the League after that, and the League was pushing some changes because they thought that the, they, they thought that that was an unreasonable request in state law. And they got a sponsor, they passed a law changing it to 60 days, giving councils 60 days to respond after a death to appoint somebody or else go to an election. That bill went through both houses of the legislature. It went to the governor and the governor vetoed it and said he couldn't understand why cities couldn't respond in 30 days. Totally unexpected, no one knew, you know, when, when Dick died, of course, and it took us a little while to get organized. The League didn't stop there. They went out with a request to all cities, if you've got any stories, come and tell us, we'll put it together. I went back to them, cities all over the state went back to them. They went to legislators, they went to the governor, first of all, with this whole list of cities that are saying, we've had problems in this area. The governor said, I didn't realize that if you push the bill through this time, I'll, I'll sign it and it'll become law. And just within the last 30, 45 days, the governor signed a bill that now says that if a vacancy occurs, the council has 60 days to fill that vacancy instead of 30. The League is our representative to deal with issues that, that we want to take up. And they have the lobbyists in Sacramento to especially deal with, with the legislators there and with the law where it affects us. And I will be going to the League function in San Diego, the annual conference. We'll, they'll be asking a representative of each city to vote on resolutions that are introduced by different cities as to what their focus should be, what their priorities should be this next year, what kind of legislation, what kind of training and et cetera they, they should put on for the cities. And it takes the council action to designate someone. If Tony's going and you'd like to cast the vote, I'll be there at the, we can be there at the session and you can be the, and I'll be the alternative if you want. Okay, or however the council wants to do it, but.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think you should be the primary. I, I mean, I appreciate, you know, a vote of confidence, but I should be the alternate, I feel.
Okay. If no one else is going.
I'll second that.
Will you get a motion and second? Let's vote. Okay, the new business item for tonight, jail swap program memorandum of understanding. Ms. Pelster, would you introduce your statement?
Mr. Mayor, council, audience and viewers, Police Chief Tim Dabney will present tonight's report.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, I've come before you this evening to talk about the memorandum of understanding with the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department, and what this memorandum of understanding- And what this memorandum of understanding is basically for is to allow us to use what they call swap workers, which stands for Sheriff's Work Alternative Program, to work in and around the police station. The historical purpose for this is, for the past fifty years, we've operated a jail here in the city of Lompoc and it's been recognized by the grand jury as one of the cleanest and nicest, although it is old facility. As, you know, we don't discriminate against people just because they're old or buildings, for that matter. And we've had the, the privilege of having a trustee. And what a trustee is, is someone who is a low-level offender assigned to work in an outlying area or inside the county jail or one of the farms or some, and work in those areas. They're allowed a little bit more freedom than regular prisoners in the system. And our ability to obtain trustees over the past few years has, has diminished greatly to the extent that currently we have no one who is eligible. And in order to become a trustee in the county sheriff's system or to work here at the Lompoc Police Department, your offense has to be a type of offense that wouldn't propose either an escape risk or hazard to any of the people in, where you're going to work, et cetera. And so, we've had very little luck since the beginning of this year in obtaining any trustees. In fact, we have no trustee assigned to our station at this time. And what the trustees have been doing for the past fifty years has been some very minor maintenance inside the jail, some mopping, some helping with feeding the prisoners there and washing the squad cars and just some, just some light maintenance around the, the department. And mostly their primary job is keeping our fleet clean. And it's, it's been a luxury that we've taken for granted for many, many years until now it's not available. Currently with the overcrowding issue in the jail and with some of the legislation that has passed this year on easing up on prison sentences and jail sentences based on good behavior and things like that, that population has even become more reduced. So, one alternative that we do have is to engage in the swap program. The swap program has been in existence since nineteen eighty-five. What, what the Sheriff's Work Alternative Program is, if you have a low-level offender who is, qualifies for this program, either they have a job or they're, they have some obligation and their offense is such that they don't need to be incarcerated full-time, they can serve their time by, through community service. So, many of the nonprofit organizations and many governmental agencies will use swap workers on a day-to-day basis because it's one-day work for credit daytime cert. So, for instance, if someone had a drunk driving conviction and they had to do ten days in custody, then they could come down to the police department, work ten days during, you know, an eight-hour shift or whatever and get credit for a day of cert. So, what we are asking for, we've been engaged in a discussion with the sheriff's department to, to use swap workers. What we are asking for is authorization to sign an MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the Lompoc Police Department and the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department to start obtaining swap workers to help us with maintenance of the vehicles and, and such similar things that the trustee would have done. And I am available for any questions, should you have any.
Questions to the chief?
Well, chief, I, as you know, I've had the opportunity to see both sides of this with the Highway Patrol, you know, when I, well, no, no, no council member. No, I wasn't one of the, no.
Low-level, what?
Yeah, no. But when I was with the Highway Patrol, working out of the Beutleton Office, coming over to the Lompoc Police Department from eighty-five up until, you know, it was really nice to be able to go in there to be booking someone and have your unit cleaned up while you're there. I mean, it's kind of nice. Not only that, if I read the report right, it's going to save us, save the police department seven dollars a car wash.
Correct.
So, so there is a monetary benefit even with the swapper being there. And then, when I was working for the police department, they not only, you know, like the chief said, they, they didn't only just take care of the fleet, but they take, they took care of all the media little jobs, the trash. Somebody, an officer could come in and say, you know, somebody didn't hit the trash can out in the alley. They take care of it, they mop the floors, clean the place, they help, help the jailers. So, it's a, I think it's a great program and I didn't know that we didn't have this still going. I just thought the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department canceled it. So, I'm in favor of it a hundred percent.
Mr. Lingel.
Chief, I understand that this is going to save the city money. Are there any costs, city costs associated with this?
No, no, we don't incur any costs. We do have to indemnify the county for any work-related injuries or anything that occurs to the swap worker when they're on our property. But that is exactly the same situation as we had, as we had when we had the trustees working for us for all those years. And so, we don't, we don't put them in hazardous situations. We don't require real heavy type labor or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is, when we did not have a trustee or at times when we don't, have we ever, and maybe Mr. Panoni if, can tune in on this, have we ever tried to work with the local court system for nonviolent offenders to be serving community service at our jail?
Well, it, it's kind of a tricky legal situation because we are a type-one jail facility. And as, as such, the requirements in a type-one jail facility is that we cannot formally receive sentenced prisoners, meaning that someone cannot be sentenced to our facility. We can only hold people for ninety-six hours and then they're transferred to the court or to Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department. Now, if they are housed officially by the sheriff's department and then sent out as a trustee of the sheriff's department, that's how we've met the legal requirement for all these years. And a swap worker would still be answerable to the sheriff's department. For instance, if a swap worker revi- violated some law or had problems with serving their sentence, they go back to the sheriff's department with that issue. We really don't, other than them coming and working, we don't have custody, legal responsibility for that person as terms of them serving their sentence. We just keep track of the time they serve and then when the sheriff's department releases them, then they don't, they don't come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions at this time, let's hold. Is there any comments from the public on the item on the agenda before us? Any, seeing no one rise, we'll bring you back to the council. We have a request to authorize the, the chief of police to sign the agreement with the county. What are the wishes of the council?
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Are we ready for a motion? I am, I move that we recommend, staff recommends the city to authorize the chief of police to sign the MOU with the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that.
Motion second for us, let's cast your votes. That's approved unanimously. We have no written, we have no written communications to, to read or into the record. Oral communications in another two minutes. If anyone would like to speak to the council at this, this time? No one, no one rise? Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Wrongway.
I, I should have covered this previously, but I wanted to add to the statistics that you quoted. We painted about a hundred and forty-five gallons worth of paint, which if you do the math on covering graffiti, that's fifty-eight thousand square feet citywide. And Councilmember Durham was present and, and playing traffic cop. And so, I, I feel like I've been profiled, so. But no, it was a great turnout and I want to thank the support of the city staff. There are other departments involved besides ours. The solid waste department was involved and, and the Parks and Recs Department was involved as well, so they deserve some credit too.
Thank you, chief. And the other oral communications, now seeing no one rise, we'll bring it back to the council. Council, redevelopment agency requests, comments and meeting reports. Any final words from members of the council? I have one item to report as required by state law anytime we travel. I did make a trip to Northern California at city expense for the groundbreaking ceremony of a four-hundred-million-dollar power plant that will produce reliable, cheap, clean power for the city of Lompoc. Will, the ceremony was impressive. We had representatives of the federal government, we had representatives of the state assembly, of the state senate, representative of the governor's office speak to us. And the California Energy Commission said that, he commanded public power all over the state. He said that right now, the state is trying to push, the Energy Commission is trying to push a regulation that will require by 2025, all utilities in California to have thirty-three percent green power. Most public powers, communities are already well on their way to that. Lompoc already exceeds that. So, we're meeting twenty-twenty-five goals for clean air with the power that we're getting right now and using for the city of Lompoc. It was an impressive ceremony and I was glad to be there to represent the city of Lompoc. Mr. Durham.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, and to the council. One announcement that I failed to give because I got so wrapped up with the chief and his wrong-way driving. On Friday, the sixteenth, we had an outstanding turnout from the Chamber of Commerce for Airmen Appreciation Barbecue Day. It was absolutely phenomenal, heartwarming. They had enough food to feed twelve thou, or twelve hundred, twelve hundred airmen. And I think we surpassed that. What was, what was really heartwarming is when they'd come up and they'd say, "Thank you" and, you know, you kind of get that little choke right here and you, you know, "Thank you for your commitment." These men and women are phenomenal. Colonel Boats, in his classic style, came up just about, oh, halfway through it and ran through the line, grabbed a couple of pieces of meat and then ran back to the office so he could put his boots back up on the table, I think. That's what I told him anyway. But it was a, it was a great day. We had a wonderful time and I really want to applaud the Chamber of Commerce because they did a phenomenal job.
Okay, we'll close council comments at this time and move to the two items we pulled off the consent agenda. Mr. Lingel, you pulled those items?
I was just, I'd like to have Mr. Deering come forward and give us a report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members in public. I will note for the record that I am not Craig Deering, as you may have, may have guessed. I'm Kevin McKeon, City of Lompoc, city engineer. And Mr. Deering, since it was on the consent calendar, we didn't anticipate that he needed to speak on it tonight, so I'm here filling in, in his place. This, this project is the second of two stimulus projects that the city, at this, at least the Public Works Department has participated in. First project was in late two thousand nine and paved many arterials and collectors in town, most notably Central Avenue, you may recall, late in two thousand nine. Very successful. We used rubberized asphalt for a lot of the projects, which recycles used tires back into the, mixes them into the mix, therefore saving our landfills. Project is part of our ongoing street maintenance program to improve and maintain the city's transportation infrastructure. As I said, it includes replacing asphalt concrete and rubberized asphalt, both conventional and rubberized asphalt, in overlays and digouts. Let's see, one, a couple of other things to note about the project. We have federal, a variety of funding, federal funds going into the project as well as some local funds. We have stimulus funds in the amount of about one-point-two million dollars. And when we advertised the project, we opened bids and the low bid came in at nine-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand dollars. So, the low bid would not use all of our stimulus money that was available and obviously we want to do that. So, we recommend, and we had anticipated this, we recommend that go ahead and awarding several bid alternates that will increase the scope of the project and allow us to use all the stimulus money that were due and close that, that part of the federal funds out. What else did I want to note about this? So, the total project will be, it will equal one-point-nine-zero-seven-nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand dollars, one-point, one-million-nine-hundred-and-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. And we'll use fundings from ERA, Integrated Waste Management Board, which is the rubberized asphalt grant, and other roadway funding. The project locations are Seventh Street from Ocean to College, O Street from Laurel to College, and also from Ocean to Cypress and most of Santa Lucia, in fact, all of Santa Lucia Road within the project city limits. So, about one-point-three miles. Therefore, staff recommends you adopt the plans and specifications for FY-oh-nine-S-six and award the contract and base bid additive alternates one through four in the amount of one-point-five-five-seven-nine-eight-nine million dollars to Cal Portland Construction. Authorized construction contract change orders in the amount of not to exceed two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars and approve the budget adjustments as attached to exhibit one. And that'll conclude my staff report.
Lingel?
Thank you. And I realize, not Mr. Deering, I didn't have my glasses on at the time.
No problem.
Yeah, I want to thank you for giving the report because as Mr. Lynn pointed out, it isn't often that we're able to do something like this and get the city some credit. I mean, we've utilized almost two million dollars worth of stimulus money. None of this money is coming out of our general fund. We're making substantial improvements in our city. And the other thing that is notable that you didn't mention, but it is notable, is it's a somewhat local company that we've, we're awarding the bid to, not a Lompoc company, but a Santa Maria company, still adding money to our local economy here. I'm assuming these people that are working here will be eating in our restaurants, possibly staying in our hotels. So, it's, it's, it's good for our economy and it's good for Northern Cal, Northern Santa Barbara County. So, I want to thank you and your staff for putting together this report and getting these projects going, so thank you.
Sure.
Are you ready to make a motion on the item?
Yes. I move that we approve staff recommendations. I'm sorry.
Are there any comments on, on the motion? Do we have a second?
I second it.
Any other discussion of the item on the floor? None. This was oral, this was listed on the consent calendar and we didn't have any, we normally don't open it up for oral communications, but since the request came from the public, is there anyone in the public would like to comment on, on this at this time? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, let's cast our vote. That's approved unanimously. Mr. Lingel, you also pulled item four.
And I see Mr. Ambler is in the audience today, so if Mr. Ambler would come forward and give a presentation.
I guess the background of this is that the water department had a requirement to, first of all, change a lot of the brass works that are used in the water system to no lead or low lead types of brass and fittings. And the other requirement was that we were moving it to reading it by the Wi-Fi system so that the water- it to reading it by the Wi-Fi system so that the water meters would have an ability to talk to the Wi-Fi system and report on meter readings. And the plan at the Water Department and the budget situation was that they thought they could do the meters in town in something like seven years, and so, it was planned on a regular basis over seven years. So, in talking with the Water Department, my people and the Water Department started testing some of the new low-led and, and Wi-Fi-enabled meter systems. They figured out what they wanted. We solicited bids from, I think we got nine proposals, and they narrowed it down to three that met the qualifications. There were some special qualifications that had to do with the plumbing setup and exactly how the meter fit in the box in our meter systems. And they evaluated them for how they worked and how efficient they were, and they picked a little bid and, and the one that did the best job, and it was a good process. And we have pricing now for the entire replacement process. We can go faster, we can go slower, we have the ability to change quantities, and I think it's a good, good contract and a good award, and I urge you to approve it. And that concludes my talk, and if there's anything I can answer, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Lingle?
Again, I'd just like to compliment Mr. Ambler and his staff on this project. It's not only environmental friendly, we're going to a lead-free as opposed to a lead-in fittings. It is making use of our Wi-Fi system. It, over the years, will result in some savings to the city, and again, it's taking no money out of our general fund, everything is coming out of our enterprise fund, so it's a, it's a very good program, and I want to compliment you and your staff, so thank you.
My staff, but it was also the Water Department. They spent a lot of time thinking forward in how much they were going to do and how they were going to work it, and, and the two sections worked very well together to make something work for the city.
Thank you for bringing it up because it's really the, the different departments of the city working together on this project, so, again, thank you.
Mr. Mardner?
Thank you, Mayor. There is going to be, I suppose, a cost-saving shift here from the Water Department to Wi-Fi, and I'm not certain, but at one point in time, could, and it doesn't need to be tonight, but at one point in time, could we get a little understanding of the budget side of the whole thing? Because I believe that you're shifting cost from one thing to another one, correct? Okay, if, if, if we could have, my request would be if we could have some small memo on that so we keep up with the budget. Thank you. I don't have any other comments.
All right, we have a request then to approve the word of a contract in excess of a million dollars for water meters?
I move that we approve the staff recommendations.
I second it.
Move and second it. Let's cast our vote. That's approved unanimously. We will, we have no more business on the agenda. We will adjourn to our next regular meeting, which is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, August 3rd. Thank you.